Jonathan Cohen, Suzanne Carmichael, myself, Andrea Folsom, our superintendent Amy Doyle, Jody Condon, our board secretary, and then our student reps, Lucy Pircor and Kip Hedquist. Rob Nato is currently doing an update on our safety redesign at the PTA. And Dulce Lopoma is stuck in the meeting, but she will be sneaking in any minute. So with that, let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
So before we get into the super fun stuff, um, we have two sets of meeting minutes to recruit this evening. One is from the joint school board meeting on October 21st with the sweatboard. The other is from the regular school board meeting, the meeting involving those joint meetings also on October 2. Any discussion? And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Amy Post, motion carries. Yay! And with that, I give to you...
How you doing?
Pass it over to Dulce.
Hi, everyone. So sorry for being late. My apologies. Hi, guys. All right, we're on the public comment?
We are.
All right, we are up to our first public comment portion of the evening. If you would like to come up, there's a microphone. Please state your name, address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay? Great. Thank you, everyone. We'll do this just to get up to the end of the evening.
All right, first up, Lucy Kip, welcome back.
You're most welcome. All right.
Hi.
Good to be back. I know I missed a little bit, being away and all, but there are some fun things that happened. For starters, a lot of seniors have gotten all their college applications in and done. Most of the early action, early decision deadlines are passed now. Second, I wanted to say that the safety redesign, there's been a lot of talk about that in high school, and a lot of like positive reinforcement I've heard from all that. Third thing is, I want to give a shout out to new superintendent Amy Doyle. I've got a lot of props, heard a lot of props about you recently, just thought I'd share.
I don't know what I did.
Just had people like come up to me and be like, "Oh, man, can you tell the superintendent she's doing a great job?" Will do.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and then you want to talk about sports a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So for sports updates, it's gotten a lot of attention at the high school recently. We've had a string of unfortunate close losses for ball sports in the playoffs. Field hockey, double overtime in semifinals to Messineck. Girl soccer, quarterfinals in single overtime to St. Thomas. And then boy's soccer, last night, tough loss to Kearsarge, two to one. But cross country, girls were state champions, boys got second at states. And then at meet of champions, the boys team got 14th in the whole state, all divisions. And then the girls team got sixth in the whole state. So we have the New England championships this Saturday in Thetford, Vermont. Max Gupel also got 25th place, so he got individual qualification there.
Yeah, just one other thing that I'd share, which was pretty neat last night at the boys, especially soccer semifinal game, due to technical difficulties, the national anthem wasn't able to play, and our student section and fans managed to get it going and instead sang it themselves in the stands, so I thought that was very wholesome. It's just a good showing of like the character of the Hopkinton School District.
Yeah. And then middle school updates, they had their first dance of the year. It was New York City themed. I heard it went well, so. Last night was also seventh grade organ system night. So it was a joint project between the English and science classes in the seventh grade, and they put together like infographics about different body systems. So it was like a presentation open to the public. Yeah, so middle school fall sports are all over, their sports awards already happened, and I know middle school basketball is already underway. Yeah, and then Ozram, I know they came to our last school board meeting. In their competition this weekend, they got second out of the whole competition at their Battle of the Bay at Merrimack High School. And then the last thing, so today PSAT scores are supposed to come out, so for juniors and then any sophomores who took them. So just kind of interesting, much quicker turnaround for college board this year versus last year. They haven't come out yet, but assuming they do come out.
Say you'll be sitting there checking.
No.
You're cool.
I'm good.
Fine, cool. Amazing. Anything else?
I think that's all from us tonight.
Any questions for our student reps? Great. All right, thanks, guys. All right, we have some amazing student highlights. We have the girls' middle school, high school, cross country, state champs. Congratulations. Do you guys want to come up and talk about your season?
I'm George Sable. I'm the head coach for the middle school girls' cross country team. A repeating state champions this year, two in a row. And these are four of our runners that we had. We had a total of 12 runners this year. And as a coach, it was such a gratifying year. I could have put any 12 into our championship race. In the championship race, you could only put seven girls into the race. And it was so interchangeable, I could have put any of the seven, or any of the 10, into the race. It was an unbelievable season to race, to watch them. Would somebody would like to say a couple words?
Do you want to ask your questions? Yeah, here we go.
Come on up.
Do you want to, yeah, why don't you tell us about what it meant to train as a team, and what the season was like, and what the most fun part was, and what the hardest part was?
Just insert one of these.
Yeah, that sounds great. You each can take one chance.
Yes.
The hardest part is probably like repeating hills.
Repeating hills, yes.
I would say the best part of the season was definitely our home meet and the state meet. It was just like a good highlight to end on.
What was that, the fairgrounds?
The Hopkinton Fairgrounds.
I think the funnest part was the candy run and the ice cream runs.
Candy run and the ice cream run.
I also agree with that. I thought that those candy runs were like really fun and enjoyable.
And the candy run, you run around finding candy, correct? Yeah, that sounds delightful.
Somebody tell you that.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for our middle school state champs? How many miles do you think you ran over the course of training and all the meets?
I have no idea.
Well, one of the things, these four actually started running in July, early July, and like three times a week. And so, you know, they really did it for a long time to achieve what they did. So, you know, running is not the most easy thing. You can't just pick up, you know, do 100 meters. You've got to do, you know, two miles at a very hard pace. And these young ladies have really done a great job, along with the eight that are not here tonight. They are probably doing homework. Oh, wait a minute, they don't have school tomorrow.
Amazing. Awesome. Thank you, middle school state.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Middle school state, can we actually do a picture with you guys? Is that all right? We're going to have a few pictures here.
You have to come for this one. You're literally a runner.
I am a runner.
Okay.
And I'm very proud of them.
Let's do it.
And I want to talk about all the things.
Yep.
And I can't talk about all the things.
Yeah, I'm going to need you guys to come in a little bit. I need you, I need, no, I need you to come in. Stand in front of each other, stand, yeah.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right, I believe we have our high school champions, is that right? Lucy? Hi, guys. All right.
Hi, good evening. I'm Coach Roth, and this is the team. Obviously, Coach Gupel at the end, I think you guys might know him. Yeah, so just a little synopsis about the season for the team. Obviously, very successful, ending with a championship. This is their sixth championship in eight years. So, and in the past nine years, the worst that they have finished is second place. So we have an outstanding team, and thank you to Coach Sable for continuing to send us very good runners. Appreciate that, keep it going. Last year, we, of our seven top athletes, four of them graduated. So really coming back with three, a small school like this, we would think of a rebuilding year, you know, coming back, and that's kind of what I was thinking, but they proved me wrong once again. They rebuilt very quickly. So a lot of new faces to the sport, as well as to high school. But they stepped up amazingly, put in the work. I specifically chose a very difficult schedule this year with some very large meets. In fact, their easiest meet of the season was the championship meet, I would have to say, for sure, because it was just Division III, and most of the season we were competing against D1 and D2 top teams, so. But they were ranked, I think, seventh in the beginning of the season, and then they fluctuated a little bit, but by the end, they got that final sixth position that earns them a spot with the New England championship. So we're heading there on Saturday, and looking forward to that for sure. But one other thing I just wanted to mention was, you know, at the beginning of the season, we lost one of our athletes to suicide, Anna O'Reilly. She was a member of the team a few years ago, so none of these girls knew her, really. But they really embraced the fact that she was a major part of the team, that she contributed so much. And the dynamic of this team is that whatever they put into it, it carries on for years after. So they really embraced Anna. Tonight, they're wearing their purple ribbons, they have those with them, they've had them with them all season. So they've dedicated their win this year to Anna, and they continue to as well. In 2021, we made it to New England's, first time when I was a coach, and Anna was there at Thetford, where we're going back to. So a lot of crazy coincidences this season, but a super special season, very emotional. But they have done an awesome job, so congratulations to them. And I think the team captains want to say something.
Yeah, I mean, basically just everything that Coach Roth said, like, we kind of, like, did it for Anna, I would say, like throughout the season with our ribbons that I think Gwen made for us, which is really cool. And so we wore them to our home meet, which was like special, because it was just like in the town. And so, yeah, that was definitely like a big part of our season, but it was just really fun. I think like me and Lucy were both pretty nervous, because we had like a lot of friends who graduated on the team. But I would say, at least for myself and I think Lucy too, we all made like so many amazing new friends on the season. And it's always fun to have like friends from different grades that you can see at school and then have a lot of fun with at practice after. So, yeah, it was just a really, really great season, and I think everyone just put a lot of time and effort into it. And I'm really thankful that I got to run with these amazing people and that we get to continue our season further. And I think after New England's, we're going to go to Nike Regionals, which will be really fun. And, yeah, so just like more team building experiences, so.
Yeah, I don't really have too much else to say, but it's been a great season. We've made a lot of progress as a team and individually. It's been great to sort of like see everyone and the team as a whole sort of like move into our new role as a group and continue to perform great. And, yeah, we're not done yet, so.
And also thank you to like the Hopkinton Runners Society, who put together our home meet and kind of helped us throughout our season.
Any questions for Amy? Oh, wait, yeah, sorry, go ahead. Hi, Norm.
I just, I just, I just want to take a moment to really say thank you to Coach Roth, for all he's done for this team, for what he's done for this community. We are so blessed to have him as a coach, and I could tell you, my third year coaching, I am learning so much from him, and I just really wanted to recognize him as such a great community member and such a great coach. Thank you very much, Coach Roth, for all that you do. Last thing I want to say is thank you to Amy Doyle. She came to our state championship meet, and I have to say, I've never seen a superintendent at a meet. I invited her, it was great, I was excited. But the best memory about that, of course, winning the state championship, seeing Amy's look when she saw all the kids cross, laying there with no breath. Her face was...
You guys were great. I was nervous.
Yeah, her face with panic was amazing, but thank you. It meant a lot to this team, especially this year. Thank you for coming out of your Saturday to support this team. Thank you.
Any questions for the champs? Yeah, there we go. Let's do it.
Hardest course, favorite course, hardest practice, favorite practice?
Okay, hardest course, probably, I'd say Thetford, where New England's will be. Favorite course, what do we think? Not Thetford. Definitely not Thetford. Oh, our home course, yeah, the fairgrounds. Fairgrounds is great. Hardest practice, oh, yes, Gould Hillary Pete's. That's a tough one. And favorite practice is probably anyone when we get chocolate milk after.
Yeah, I mean, I think like it definitely is an individual sport, because like your performance on that day, like, is individual, but also like your performance can contribute to the team. Like, the top five usually score, and then if it's like tied, it'll go to the sixth person. And so it just kind of depends on how everyone does that day. And it's really fun, because like to advance to these other meets, like meet of champions and New England's, you have to do that as a team, you can do it as an individual, but I feel like it's really fun to make it as a team, so. And, I mean, we like spend all our time together, and so, and we run together usually, so it's not completely individual at all. It's really important to have a strong team, I think, and that's what really makes it fun, for me at least.
Does anyone else want to add anything? You guys are a standout team. Thank you, congratulations. All right, let's do one quick picture.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely a photo.
Of course, Amy, you're like, is she... You need to be on the toes. Three, two, one. Suzanne, go to your right. Three, two, one. Congratulations.
You were. I saw you this morning, too.
All right. Thank you to our youngest crowd for being so patient. You guys did an amazing job. Welcome to the school board meeting, EAC.
All right, thank you. So here I have 10 students that are in the Environmental Action Club. They are very passionate and driven by a desire for sustainability. They have done a considerable amount of research on their own, they chose to do, they have stayed after school countless days to prepare for this. So, are you ready? Members, speak really loudly, okay?
I just want to say, I've been working with these kids since the beginning. Our first meeting was in September, and our group has grown so big. We have sixth, fifth, and fourth graders. I think it has created maybe some, most of the kids in the group. And this year, it is, it's called the Environmental Action Club, not just waste warriors. So we have kids that are really passionate about making a difference at Maple Street and in the community. And they are ready to go. They've been talking about it, they're so excited to present tonight. And so I just wanted to take a minute and say how proud I am of them for wanting to speak in front of everybody. And that's incredible, so.
Will you angle down the mic for me?
Yes. They hold it, too.
Oh, that's great. Let's do it.
Ooh, I like that. Do you want me to hold it? Okay.
Hello, my name is Frances, and I am here to talk about littering in our community. This is a passionate subject for me, because I want a healthy planet. Did you know litter harms the planet by attracting animals that may carry diseases and other health hazards? Speaking of animals, many animals eat litter and can become sick or even die. Recyclable items are littered, too, and this is wasting our resources. Did you know that according to National Geographic, it is estimated that 50 billion pieces of trash are littered in the US each year? Many pieces of trash don't compose, or they take a long time to decompose. They, there could already be 50 million tons of plastic litter in the world's oceans. That's the same weight as 25 million large elephants. What's even more disturbing is, according to earth.org, plastic litter injures over 600 species of animals that live in and near the sea, and about 100,000 marine animals are killed by ocean plastic ingestion or entanglement each year. This is only the tip of the iceberg. If we don't do something about this, by 2050, there could be more plastic than fish in our oceans. This is madness. We need to fix it. How? We can put more trash cans out on the playgrounds and around our town and educate students in our community on the matter. We can also make cafeteria food distribution plastic-free. We can pick up trash not only at our school, but around the town. We can also take part in our community-wide cleanup each spring. Let's reduce the amount of waste we put in our trash by consuming less and being happy with what we have. In summary, I would like to encourage people to do better and stop throwing their garbage on the ground. I hope you'll help me by picking up litter when you see it and disposing of it properly. Thank you.
Rosie and I want to get rid of plasticware in our cafeteria and in our homes. This is important to us, because at lunch, we see a lot of kids using plasticware, even though we have metal silverware to use. Many of our classmates don't understand how clean our reusable silverware is, even though they've been told before. Did you know our amazing cafeteria staff makes sure it gets put through the dishwasher many times? Not only are they sanitized, but they are reusable, probably forever. Plasticware eventually breaks down into microplastics, which never decompose.
Did you know also that the making and throwing away of plastic adds to environmental pollution? So many plastics are not recyclable, and this includes most plasticware. This is leading to the ruining of our environment. We don't want the earth to break down, because we live on it, and that would be bad. According to habitsofwage.org, 40 billion pieces of plasticware are thrown in the trash in the United States each year. That's just crazy.
We want to encourage our school cafeteria to only put out reusable metal silverware, so kids don't have a choice anymore to use the plasticware. What else can we do?
We can kindly encourage all friends to use the silverware that's already in the cafeteria or bring their own from home. We'd like to ask families who already have, who have children, to bring their own lunches to school, to send them with reusable silverware. Better yet, just don't buy plasticware at all. Thank you.
Good evening. Our group and Anna want to help people stop feeding into the fast fashion craze, where clothing is produced cheaply, falls apart faster, and has huge environmental impact. Cheaply made fabrics waste water, uses massive amounts of energy, and dumps tons of plastic-based textiles into our landfills when they all fall apart or are out of fashion.
Did you know that it takes around 2,000 gallons of water to produce a single pair of jeans? This is the same amount one person drinks in about seven years. Even worse, according to the UN Environment Program, the fashion industry is responsible for nearly 10% of the harmful gases that cause climate change, more than all international flights and marine shipping combined. How can we change this? We can host a clothing and accessory swap right here at Maple Street School for all the students. The EAC did this at the middle high school, and they want to do the same.
What's old and boring to one person can be new and exciting to another. We can also do this for sporting gear for all of our sports each season. Not only does it make sense environmentally, but it saves everyone money, too. We can shop for clothing less often and try to reimagine our wardrobes. If we do purchase clothing, we can shop at secondhand stores or those that support sustainable fashion. We hope you'll all think about this the next time you shop for new clothing and will consider volunteering to help us accomplish our clothing swap goals. Thank you.
Good eve... Good evening. Our group, Ruby, Luca, Kate, Hannah, and Karen, would like to stop the use of single-use plastics. This is a problem that really stuck out to us. We hope you, our school board, and community will hear our words and understand that this is something we really feel passionate about. We hope you'll help us accomplish our mission.
Nearly every piece of plastic ever made still exists. Did you know that the Waste Warriors here at Maple Street School did a waste audit last spring, and there was a total of over 10 pounds of single-use plastics thrown in the trash for just one day? That's an average of over 1, 1,800 pounds of single-use plastics every school year.
According to eartha.org, it can take up to about 450 years for plastic to decompose. In fact, even then, we don't even know if it fully ever decomposes.
Americans purchase 50 billion plastic water bottles each year. It averages to about 13 bottles per month for each person in the United States. That means if you use a reusable water for one whole year, one person can save an average of 156 plastic bottles.
It's estimated that eight million metric tons of plastics makes it though its way into the ocean every year.
Did you also know that according to the National Institute of Health, at least one thousand five hundred sixty-five wildlife species have been found to have accidentally ingested plastic?
How do we stop this from happening? Here are some ways that we can all take action. We can organize a campaign to reduce single-use plastics at school.
We can bring our reusable glass jars to refill stores like the Witching Hour right here in Kentucky.
We can bring reusable bags when we go shopping in stores.
We can stop using single-use plastic in styrofoam containers and packaging in our cafeteers. When packing lunches from home, kids can bring reusable containers and silverware from their, for their entire lunch. Everyone can bring a reusable water bottle too.
We can encourage our families to buy and book and then put them into smaller reusable containers to use for meals when we travel and go to work or school. Better yet, just don't buy packaging that's styrofoam or plastic.
Thank you.
That was amazing and so informative and well cited. I am blown away, literally.
I was writing down rhetorical appeals, devices, attribution. You guys moved me away.
That was outstanding. Do we have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
First off, thank you so, so much. So my name is Ms. Taylor and I am in charge of the food service program here at Maple Street. So you had the right audience tonight. I have a question I want you to think about. How do we get rid of the milk cartons?
That is, um, we're gonna keep those.
Okay, you're gonna keep those. All right, all right. But we wanna get rid of, what on, what on your, your wonderful board there can I get rid of?
Um, plastic silverware.
Um, don't like these things very well.
Um, like plastic bags.
I was like, plastic for the apple.
Like, like instead of how you put them in the basket.
Yeah, and we could put these maybe carbons?
Yeah, 'cause I remember last year we had them in carbons. And that was, we recycled a lot more.
Ethanol was. Ethanol is recyclable, ethanol, but they will.
I think we should get some sort of recyclable.
Okay.
So, great.
And I don't, we could not have these little plastic bags instead of little.
Yep. Thank you so, so much.
Great job, guys. Any other questions for our EAC?
I have a question. So we, uh, we're going to be doing this right now. Because I'm going to be there. What are you kids thinking about all the little plastic toys?
Oh, I just, I don't like it.
They're just gonna get lost at some point.
Yeah.
So it's the same as the past question.
They always say something like carbon and stuff. Yeah.
That's something I'm gonna be thinking.
Yeah, it's my friend who's not going to wear it. They thought. I, uh, the most fair is for both. Not.
Okay, okay. Let's hear from Rob, yep.
So one, you guys are very inspiring. I'm gonna go on and like, do you think about some stuff that I'm gonna do? This is my, my Yeti thing, and then there's this repeat thing that keeps it from falling out of my hand. What is that?
I don't know.
Where did I get this? Where'd you get it from?
Plastic?
It's a bike. I was on a mountain bike and I said, hmm, that feels so weird. It's a great, it's a birthday. It's creative, that's why you're selling your phone.
You guys are amazing. Any, any questions? What's been your favorite part of being part of EAC this year?
Um, this year or last? All the projects, probably.
All the projects?
I mean, I really feel like, like going like this in the hallway.
That's right.
Making these.
Making those? Yeah.
Um, I really enjoyed, uh, like helping people, like sorting all the stuff over there.
Yeah.
Do you know that Lucy here is in charge of doing it at the middle high school for like four hundred and fifty kids? Uh-huh, big time stuff.
And do you know what you guys did tonight is what I do for my whole job? And you, you did it perfectly.
Yeah.
You can just take my whole job.
Yep.
Go around, do that to everyone.
Yep. Um, okay, what, how did you guys figure out all your sources? How did you do your research?
You got like, Miss, uh, yeah. Miss Roth, especially like she sent like an hour putting a bunch of links on her. And Google.
Definitely didn't use Google at all. We believe you.
Amazing. You guys did it, I am, yes, we definitely wanna do a picture, but this was an incredible thing. I think we all feel incredibly inspired, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, I think this is wonderful, thank you. All right, let's do a photo.
Hey, all faces up here, looking over here.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you, EAC, really appreciate everybody. All right, welcome to our civic students. That's what I'm assuming you guys are here for. Ms. Intros, nice to see you all.
Thank you.
All right, great, next up, we are talking on our, our next iteration of our budget conversation for the next step, not an iteration per se, about personnel and benefits. Uh, Lauren, Amy, I'm gonna hand it over to you guys.
Want me to plug in? Um, no, it's just gonna take me a moment. I was so engrossed with the students that my computer was not out yet. Okay. Uh, for those that are interested, there are a few paper copies over on the milk cooler. Do you want me to project the slideshow or are you gonna project that first? I was going to project the slideshow first. But I just need to get it out of the drive. Yes? I'm just gonna send you it. I sent it to Mike. I don't know, I haven't come up with anything. Did you know that Mike Cody's here tonight? Yes, instead of Matt Stone. Doing a great job, Mike Cody. Will do great. Do you have any specific sites you want? Or am I gonna rock on? I'm just here to. I'm your phone friend today. Hmm? I'm your phone friend today. You get to phone a friend today.
Yes, I was going for, like, I was trying to think of something to like start with first, but I think I need to start with the problem and then go back.
There we go. I failed this, all right. Are you ready? I'm ready, check. Okay. Yeah. Personnel budgeting. We are going to just start off very briefly that, um, Amy and I have worked very hard on this for a long time. We have met with leadership and we've gone through and really looked at where our stack levels are and what goes into our salaries and benefits. And the reason we do this separately is this one is done differently in our system. And it gives us now, along with the operations that we talked about last meeting, it gives us a full picture of where we are, and we will have that at the end. So, remember, I do just wanna remind, it's first draft. We're coming in showing you all of the items that we feel are needed. And so with that in mind, right now, the totally salaries and benefit request comes in at twenty-one million ninety-five thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Just to remind folks of the process, salaries and benefits are determined by collective bargaining agreements that are negotiated between the school board and the unions. Uh, we have three unions here in Hopkinton, the HEA, or the Hopkinton Education Association, HES, which is our support staff, Hopkinton Education Support Staff, and Teamsters, who are our custodians and maintenance staff, respectfully. Non-union staff make up the difference. We have about twenty-five non-union full-time employees. And we pool the non-union together as one collective group in the budget. Our budget this year includes one hundred and ninety-eight point four-two full-time equivalent employees. That is actually a decrease of point three-one FTEs from last year. FTEs is what we consider to be our full-time employees. When we have part-time employees, they are essentially created into a decimal, which is how you have point four-two additional FTEs. And a full-time status is based on the union and what they negotiate for what is considered a full-time employee versus a part-time employee. In addition, the salary and benefits numbers include temporary employees, coaches, and substitutes. We have broken out our benefits into a few different categories 'cause I think it's important to look at the difference in them. Some are negotiate, we can negotiate some of them with our staff and we can not negotiate some of them. So one of the items that is not negotiable is FICA, Medicare, and retirement. For this purpose, FICA and Medicare go into the same bucket and are considered the same thing. Uh, federal and state law requires us that we pay social security and we pay Medicare on wages that we provide our employees. So they pay a portion and we pay a portion. We have to obviously budget our portion, so the more the salaries go up, the more FICA goes up. In addition, retirement is state mandated for all teachers and New Hampshire. Uh, we participate in NHRS for employees as well. And so, again, although the rates are still the same this year for employers, we, as we looked at our salaries increasing, we also look at our retirement increasing. The rates right now, employees are required to pay seven percent. For anybody that is considered a teacher by state law, they, we have to pay nineteen point two-three percent. Anyone that is considered an employee is, we are twelve point seven-five percent. The pensions look the same. The New Hampshire retirement system is a pension plan for retirement. Um, the payouts are the same, we have different percentages that we have to pay in. Health insurance is a negotiable item, negotiable item. It, and it actually is going down this year. So it reflects changes in rates and it offer, and the, the new union agreements offer higher deductible, lower premium health plans. What that means is that it essentially puts more of the onus on the employee and their premiums are less per paycheck. And it more determines how much they pay is how much they use their health insurance. Average rate increase this year is very favorable for us, it came in at one point seven. So, that is a few different factors. One, it means that we are using our health insurance less this past year. Also, it means that, um, I think that we saw a decrease in our rate because last year, a lot of our retirees went to Medicare Advantage plans, which are actually no longer in our risk pool. And that reduced our pool and our, our risk a little bit. In addition, so one point seven percent, right? How is it going down? Well, in the new HEA contracts, we projected five employees would switch to the new plan and twenty-six have actually switched. And so far, in talking with them, they're planning on continuing next year. It also, we offered that same plan to our Teamsters group and our non-union, and we had folks switch from those plans as well, from those groups. So it has been very favorable, favorable for us. Any questions yet?
Just a very quick one on the last one. The Medicare Advantage plans.
Yep.
With, um, carriers pulling out of the various markets, do we have any sense as to how that might affect that model?
Yes, it does not affect us. So they are not, Anthem is not pulling out of the group pool. They pulled out of the individual market only. And our retirees are allowed to stay on plans. And sixty-five or older, they're still allowed to stay on the Medicare Advantage plans from Health Trust. Yeah. I checked on that as soon as I heard that Anthem was pulling out. I was like, what about our, our folks? And we're, they're, they're safe. It's a good question. And lastly, dental plans and other pieces of other benefits. So our dental rate increase across all plans was four point four percent. So we actually, all plans received a four point four percent increase. The new contracts approved in March of twenty twenty-five did offer dental plans that were less expensive for the district and did have a bit of, of a cost to the employees. Um, and so you'll see that although those plans are offered, the four point four percent plus increased participation does drive that number up. So that is still going up. Other benefits that are offered are negotiated, life insurance, long-term disability, health reimbursement accounts, workers' compensation and unemployment. Workers' compensation and unemployment, we don't have control over. Those are state required, and our rates did go up through Primex, who is our risk management and our insurance pool. In addition, HRAs, so health reimbursement accounts, the new plans offer larger contributions to HRAs when they take the lower plan. That means that our budget is increasing for HRAs. And life and LTD is staying roughly the same. With the numbers that come in for salary and benefits, I do, we have a very small first draft increase in food service right now, um, of about twenty-two hundred dollars. I do feel like in meeting with the food service director, we may be able to do something with that in order to keep that budget steady, since we don't have any changes in FTEs. The Fund Twenty-Two is our federal grants. We budget seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year. And Fund Twenty-Three is other local grants and donations, and that budget is also staying steady at fifty thousand dollars. So your variances tonight are mainly in the general fund. What the general fund means again is, um, that main operating fund that we use that is funded by taxes, federal and state money. So local, state, and federal dollars all go into the general fund. Right now, our proposed increase is one point four million dollars. Um, for a total proposed budget of twenty-nine million four hundred thousand five forty-two thirty-six. I'm open to any questions.
Any other questions? So, what about grants for that line twenty-two, that seven fifty thousand? Is it been confirmed then that we're going to get all of the grant money that we usually get?
It has not been confirmed. Now, grants funds are self-sustaining funds. So the revenue that we get is what we expend. So there is no tax in, increase impacted for the grants funds. So if we don't get Title II dollars, then we don't end up spending Title II dollars if that program ends up going away.
But do we have to back, are those services that we should still offer though as a district?
Title II?
Or does any of them, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, some of them, we will have to continue unless they rescind McKinney-Bento, which I haven't heard of that. Part of that is captured in Title I. You have your title, your McKinney-Bento set aside in transportation, lives in Title I. But you also saw in the operations budget that we were able to capture some of that more specifically this year. Title II is PD and mentoring. If we don't have Title II funds, I think it would be a challenge to encourage people to support new teachers without compensation because that is the, the practice that we have. Title IV, we get a small, we get the smallest allocation there, about ten thousand dollars. I don't think that we would have to absorb much in our budget there, but definitely parts of Title I and Title II.
Okay.
And then of course IDEA. I mean, there is a special education, that grant, right?
So for our civic students, in order to do this budget, I follow RSA Thirty-Two, which is the municipal budget law. And to do that, it has something in there called gross appropriation. And so in order to spend the money, I have to budget the money. And I can't spend next year more than what we have budgeted for. And so even though the grants are unknown, at this time, we still budget for them in the event that we can get them because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to spend them if they are allocated to us.
So you noted the savings in the health insurance and then a little bit of how taking our HRA or just sort of part of that whole health insurance is a new practice that we did. Do you know how much the HRA increase was?
It's about seventy-one thousand dollars.
But between dental and other benefits and health insurance savings, it basically nets out almost exactly zero, right? Can you walk through these staffing proposals that you have, please?
Be more specific about staffing proposals. We are not hiring new, we are not asking for new positions this year. There's no increase in FTEs. Be more specific.
There is a document in your packet that talked about the, the changes that we've made in allocations. Is that what you're wondering about?
We do have the extra point two. Would you mind talking about the point two for the Ed three oh sixes?
So in this document that was also in your packet, the budgeted full-time equivalent, you'll see at the, near the top where it says FY Twenty-Six Start Changes. We've walked through those additions. And then if you look almost down where it says additions, high school additional class in social studies for Ed three oh sixes. Principal Kelly and Assistant Principal Layton are going to come later on to talk a little bit about their program of studies and those changes. And one of the changes that we have not been able to just simply absorb is the change from a half a credit of world history to a full credit. And so if you think about sections that were taught, we were able to teach world history in two semesters and now we need, you know, a full year of that. So you'll see that captured, that there's an additional request for a, a current teacher to have a plus contract. Instead of, you know, certainly we're not going to hire a, a full teacher to do that. It would just be an additional section.
Which is where we, we used to change the full year of world history and it went to teaching a year and a half of American history because American history was always a year class, but as we get longer, the time period stays the same. So that's the change that's.
Yeah, and, and I'm sure you've followed some of the other three oh sixes. And they're still doing civics, economics, they're bringing in New Hampshire history. And I think when Chris comes and talks more about the Ed three oh sixes, we've been able to capture some of those in other courses related to competency. Some are already standalone courses. We teach logic and rhetoric. We teach personal finance. So we were in really good shape. Statistics goes to, from being an elective course to being a required course. So definitely some changes for that, the class of twenty thirty.
Is the Maple Street Student Support Center IA, is that, didn't we approve that last year as part of the budget process? So it's not the FY Twenty-Six Start Change?
We, we did, we did not. So when the curriculum position was cut, the understanding was that we would provide, it, we, it would be to be able to hire a new special education case manager. And depending on the cost of the case manager, we would also be able to get the Maple Street Student Support Center IA. But that was not budgeted as an FTE last year in the understanding that this, the case manager, it was contingent on that. So we did not put that FTE into the budget last year. We did that at the very beginning of this year when we did a personnel new hire. We moved somebody into that position and then we hired an IA to fill their, their role that they were in last year.
And then the preschool additional class, that was also came forward to provide. We had a, a last-minute change out of preschool. And so our current preschool teacher took on additional duties. So similar to what we do in, in other cases when someone is taking on another class, we were able to compensate that person accordingly. And that came forward, I think in September.
The middle school food service worker that you see was part of the nominations in May. We increased here our food service worker actually to help with the dishwashing so that we could have more students using the dishes instead of using, you know, throwaway silverware.
And can you talk specifically about these cuts for HMS Special Education and HHS vacant instructional?
Yep. So we, last, when we did that curriculum, I mentioned that we hired, we built a position for an HMS Special Education teacher. We have not been able to fill that position. It was filled for about a week and then it is vacant again. And so we do feel that with the amount of case managers we currently have at Harold Martin, that that position, we will be able to not have it next year. And we will be able to manage the caseload next year. And so we, Amy and I are proposing that it is cut from the budget. In addition, the high school vacant instructional assistant, that position has been vacant for a couple of years now. And so we have spoken to Mr. Kelly and said, we are going to cut that.
But is the vacant instructional position, is that a tier-two, is that a tier-two behavioralist?
No, it, no. It's not been filled, so.
Is the HHS specialized education assistant teacher, is that a tier-two behavioral specialist?
No. That is the, actually, yes, it is, that was, yes. That was the person that they did, it was part in the operating budget and part in a grant. And that is the position that we are proposing to reallocate for our, an out-of-district case manager specifically. And we are now, you know, at, at a tipping point with the case management. You know that our Director of Student Services is the primary case manager for out-of-district students. And that caseload has risen to be equal or more than what a case manager in a building is doing. So in order to help support the Director of Student Services and being able to do district-wide work, we'd like to reallocate that position to an out-of-district case manager. So not a new position, but a reallocation.
Yep.
Historically, that goes back to a practice that we had.
Yes, when I first came on, that person was primarily, it was a point seven point three or a point seven out-of-district, point three case manager primarily at Harold. Those were the two people that did that job. And as the responsibilities grew, you know, I think we went from having a hand, maybe two or three students out of district to now we're, you know, much higher than that. And so as the demands at Harold grew and the demands of that position grew, the director took on more and more. And so we're really looking at reallocating that position.
So of these top positions, these, with the FY Twenty-Six Start Changes, which ones are continuing on to next year?
We're not sure about preschool. It'll depend on what we end up hiring. I, I think you, you know that we had ended up putting a person in their short term who is not special ed certified. And so that's why we had to shift some of those responsibilities. If we are able to hire another early childhood special education teacher, that may go away, but we're budgeting it because that may or may not happen. The food service worker will continue. The Student Support Center IA at Maple Street will continue. The district-wide OT, increasing that to a full-time position will continue. We've looked at service hours for this year and next year and there's no indication that we will not need her at a full-time level. And then the additional class, Project Lead the Way, that will continue as well.
And the Warren. Yeah, the Warren articles that you're mentioning, they do include salaries and benefits at the current levels that we negotiate at. So they include what we project as the health, the cost of health insurance at that time, right? But HES's health insurance was projected three years ago, almost at this point because we're in the third year, you know, we're in the second year of their three-year contract. So when we think about that, there have been staffing changes, there's been increases, which also accounts for the, the rest of the variance of the salary.
I'll be honest, like the reduction of eighty-six thousand in health insurance, I understand it kind of nets out with the other ticket, you know, Rob and Peter and Paul, they're kind of nets out to a zero. But to me, netting out to a zero is a pretty big plus given when I'm looking at, you know, school, the whole on health insurance. I think that's a kudos to the negotiators last year.
Yep.
I think that's a year to end because we can be easily be millions of dollars in the hole on health insurance.
Can I ask a question about our HRAs versus HSAs? Are there allowing the rollover? Is there any, I know it's like nominal in terms of if we're getting anything back, but is that working in our favor to do HRAs instead of HSAs?
The plans are not eligible for HSAs.
The ones that are offered, is it not high?
Correct. The OAHD plan is a nationwide high deductible health plan that, and actually, we negotiated HSAs for that plan. But the ABSOS twenty-five fifty, which is what it's called, does not actually qualify for an HRA, an HSA plan. We do the HRA plans for two reasons. One, we don't have to pay carryover. There's no, there's no rollover. They don't, they're not allowed to roll over.
There's no provision?
No. The other piece is that we pay, HRAs are reimbursement-based accounts. So we pay based on claims and usage. And then HSAs, we would pay a flat rate regardless of usage because they can continue to carry it over and use it after the fact. So it is more beneficial for us.
So people don't use up to their fifteen hundred dollar allowance.
Then we save it.
We end up seeing back in the operator.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I will say one other thing, and I know Gose already asked me about this, but the, the Harold Martin Special Ed teacher, I'm just surprised to see that given all that we've heard about the need at Harold Martin. I understand that out-of-district case manager, I get that, but I also see that there's a high school special education teacher. So I, I'm.
There, there, yeah.
Trust you to manage the boots on the ground and to know the need, but I'm just surprised.
Yep.
I can say that.
And you can see there is a transfer of high school vacant IAs to, there's two of them that we are transferring to HMS specifically to hopefully help in the kindergarten classes as shared IAs that can go back and forth between the joint rooms to assist there with that program. And those are not, that is not, we're not riffing anybody. Those are vacant positions currently.
But I would still need it regardless of whether or not they're vacant.
I think at any moment, you could have new needs present themselves. I think that was, you know, a conversation that we've had across the leadership team. They feel like right now with the students that they have and looking at the students that are rising to be seventh graders, they feel like the people they have. But, you know, one additional student, those of you that have been in the classroom or have been in the building, you know, they might move in and we also, you know, have to prepare for that as well. But as you know, I mean, we have a bunch of people. And so if we are going to continue to keep costs at, you know, at least reasonable, we try to look at every vacant position first to try to see like, how are we managing without that position right now? Is it something that we think that we, do we have data or evidence that we absolutely need it? And if we didn't, we try to bring some fiscal responsibility to those positions.
I just want to say thank you. I think going back a few months ago, we talked about not bringing forward what did. I had a wish list that was a mile long. And the first time, you know, for the last five years looking at budgets going, are we going to do this? This is my first reaction. My first reaction here was kind of the admirable job in terms of making some decisions about reallocating people, keeping those, to keep that point where they are. I'm reducing that a little bit. Certainly the dynamics of a couple of negotiations has worked in our favor. I'm not sure we're done yet, but I think we're in a much better place than we think we are, so.
I would second that. I would also, oh, go ahead.
I have just a question.
Yeah, I do, I, I also do, I don't, I don't know. This is new information to me. And based off of everything we have heard about Harold Martin in particular, having a special education teacher has been something that's been talked about for a really long time and cutting it is not something that I take lightly. And I think as we talked about the out-of-district case manager, we talked about potentially adding a person, not cutting people, which is not to say that I don't want to do this in a fiscally responsible manner and I'm not thinking about the tax rate in a challenging year for many reasons, including the shutdown of the federal government and state benefits. However, I also want to think about our school district and what is reasonable for the students that we have. And we know that at Harold Martin, there is a lot of challenging behavior right now. And I think that if we don't invest in it now, it will proliferate for the next twelve years. And I don't want to just, and I know you thought a lot about it. I just am not comfortable just like, it's just something I not take lightly.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, as Rob just pointed out, we're not done. This is our first draft and we're open to conversation. And, you know, certainly we understand if you would like to put it back in the budget. We would just have to update those numbers and, and give you the cost and impact of that.
We still have four full-time, five. One is grant-funded, full-time case managers at Harold Martin that cover pre-K through three, plus a student support center specialist, which covers all behaviors.
Yes. But with all of that, we still also have the behavior signals camp and that.
Yep.
But we don't have that at all.
We're trying to work really hard also to fill the current this year vacancies that we have at Harold Martin and hoping that that will improve the building also.
I think, you know, that here, I don't know, a little happens in, in many schools, but well-positioned, not easy, and the correct instructional, correct curriculum that they help with and it's quite interesting. We're also having two certain people there that maybe has benefited us having.
No, I think, I think similarly, I, I struggle a bit with the, the reduction of three IAs to specialized teachers. I understand that we are also adding IAs and an out-of-district case manager. So, you know, really working to make people. But, you know, I, I am also very cognizant of the fact that, you know, our, our out-of-district replacements are really what we're trying to avoid if at all possible. So I, I may be asking for more information. I'll have to like cognizant a little bit more.
Any questions on the budget? So the next meeting, I think we get revenue, is that right?
Yes, so next meeting, we actually, as of right now, will finalize, we'll finalize the MS twenty-four for this year, so that the town can set the tax rate, and then we will start talking about, we can start talking about next year's revenue that day, or we can talk about it the, the meeting after. We also have a couple of pieces, just one piece of revenue to talk about tonight as well, that will help me finalize the MS twenty-four, which is the state form of revenues that the district budgets for this year.
Do you wanna?
We have a meeting on the eighteenth, and then another meeting on December fourth.
Yes.
Yeah, and then another meeting on the sixteenth, I forget.
So, if it is possible that we would have revenue numbers, would you give us a sense as to what this is going to cost in terms of the tax rate on the eighteenth? Or are we better to have a journey and do that on?
I would prefer to do it on the fourth, just because hopefully at that point the tax rate is set. I want, before we start, I'm happy to look at revenues and what we project will be coming in on the eighteenth, but I think if we don't have the property valuation for the tax rate, then I can't give you an idea of what the tax rates are going to be. And while it's not a reval year, right, like it was last year, that property valuation still adjusts every year with new homes and with renovations and such. So I'd want to still have that number.
So to be clear, just, let's just assume we were at this one point four number, is not anybody's best interest in chaplain, if that is the tax rate increase at this time, which we have.
Correct, correct.
So I think just to know, it is probably in our best interest to make the fourth, until we have certain need, you know, putting a solid, that is the universe. Creating projections, that's my opinion.
Correct.
Argue mine.
Yeah, from reviewing my crystal ball, at least right now, I'm thinking that that one point four would not, I'll be, be all taxes.
Okay, thank you.
But the next meeting will finalize?
Yes, the next meeting, we, we waited on finalizing the MS twenty-four so that we could talk about the convow stuff, and then I am meeting with the Department of Revenue, we meet together, we talk about all of the revenues for the district, and then we set our final MS twenty-four, and the town has not done their piece yet either, so they're not waiting on us. I learned that, and then they will be able, the Department of Revenue Administration will be able to set the tax rate for us in order for our December bills to go out. Is there any directive from the board tonight regarding the budget? The expenditure side of the budget?
No, I think, I think I'm really still in like a information gathering, so I think just having information brought to us so that we can see the full picture is really important right now.
Is there any more information I can provide for you, Andrea?
I don't think so, not at this point, but I'll let you know.
Please do.
Yeah, I think I just think you can.
Okay, great.
I will say it's super helpful, the orientation of the, I, I very much appreciate the initiatives, I think they're very helpful. By creating, it's really hard to make sense of my overall picture.
Yep. And I think we have a finance meeting on the seventeenth, right, to talk about these things anyway?
And then we can talk about some possibilities for change, and maybe make some recommendations for the board.
So just, just want to make sure, for the, the next meeting, we will have the final revenues for this year that we'll sign off on, and the monthly financials for October, and nothing new on the budget unless there's an ask from the finance for some type, small last-minute change, correct? Or information gathering that comes through from the board?
Yeah, if you have any questions, we'll, we'll let you know, and we'll be very close to it.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, so actually, let's go through and do the convow update, and then we can talk about committees, does that make sense?
Sure.
Great.
Yeah, we got some attorney fees.
We did.
You want to talk about that?
Well, I think it'll be a group effort, she's going to talk about the money and ask you some follow-up questions. I just decided that I would provide some highlights, you know, as a person who's been following this for a long time. You know, the convow decision, the Claremont decision, if you live in New Hampshire, you've been thinking and hoping for adequacy to be decided and something to happen. And so, a small thing that happened was that the state has issued reimbursement for legal fees related to the convow case. And so, convow got about six hundred sixty thousand, six hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, and then the partner districts, which we signed on to, will get a smaller amount based on their percentage, and we're at about two point three percent. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has affirmed that the state's current tax adequacy of forty-one hundred is, is constitutionally insufficient, determining that it has to be at least almost seventy-four hundred dollars per pupil, but the ruling did not issue or establish any sort of deadline or implement any increased, you know, requirement or what the mechanism will be. We are closely watching state legislation, we're expecting a, a series of bills to be introduced, anything from, you know, taking it out of sweat, looking at other, you know, ways to fund public education. And so, from Laura's perspective, we got a paper check in the mail?
We did. Nineteen thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents is the return of our legal fees that we contributed over the last four years to this case.
Perfect, amazing.
Yep. And so my ask to you is, I would like to, those are what are considered unanticipated revenues, and we have not set the tax rate yet. I'd like to incre, include them on our MS twenty-four for this year and return them in December.
Yep, does that make sense, everyone?
Rather than hold them and return them next year, I want to just, I want to just return them now.
Return them right back to taxpayers.
Because we can.
Yeah, I would agree.
Um, what that means is that's about, it's a dollar forty, or, excuse me, one, how do I say this? It's less than a penny and a half for the tax rate, however, it ends up being about seven dollars per home, for the average home in Huffington, so. Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to return unanticipated revenue from the convow attorney's fee reimbursement to the Hoffman School District for nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents?
Second.
Yeah, that's it, now to the, to the taxpayers to return to the taxpayer.
Yes.
All right, any discussion?
Just a comment, just to keep our eye on the ball here, this is money that school districts have to pay to attorneys to take to the courts, but the state is underfunding education of students in the state. This is money that ultimately is being paid by the taxpayers of the state. So, I just think it is important to keep our eye on the ball on what's at issue in this litigation in the state that one of the last heart rankings of funding education. So, I think it's, it's something to really think about, people that made the decision to litigate this rather than changing the amount that they're funding education in the state.
And if we were able to increase for this district from forty-one hundred to seventy-three hundred, it would be like a little over three million dollars, which would be a very significant thing.
More than we ever have discussed in my time in this town, and it would be incredible.
Yep. Be a significant impact.
We're also tuning in, although, you know, should be engaging with the legislature with the last round of how this money is going to come forward. Is continuing with sweat, like in a donor format, you know, we're going to be on that, so. Probably would be a net positive for our in Huffington, but it's still going to be paid by a little bit of taxes. So that, that piece of the puzzle was where we should be speaking to the legislature, this is not the solution that's really going to help the people that are being most hurt by the rest of taxes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. You got a, you got a vote?
Oh, oh yeah, uh, thank you, thank you. Olive favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was great, it was perfect, thanks. All right, we're going to talk through.
Sorry, I just wanted to, related to that, as we talk about revenues, I just wanted to give you one piece of good news, which is that so far, special education aid is coming back larger than we budgeted for. So we, we can talk about the final number that we come in at next time, but I am expecting that that is going to be a larger return as well.
That's great, that was great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so this is relatively late in the year, although, actually, I remember, it's very dark out. But we have tried in the past to talk about what the goals of the committees are going to be. And I figured it's a good thing, went through, you know, like our board level goals, we're talking through what are we all trying to accomplish, since we're, you know, part of the way it is. They don't have to be anything super strategic, but I figured we were talking about what we're trying to work towards, so we can check it out. All right, I'm going to go one by one. Policy.
Sorry, that's, all right, so, policy, we, we're going to do the same thing every year, we respond to whatever the legislature is.
Thank you.
This is how everyone responds to policy.
I know. It's honestly true.
Uh, no, so we, we go ahead and look at what the legislature did the year prior, and we update our policies accordingly, and then we are also going to be continuing with our audit of our current policies, making sure that prior policies are on books and that old policies have been updated. And then, I would say the third goal that's been ongoing is we have voluntarily worked on digitizing all of our policies. Hundreds of policies, and so we have been, over the past several years, working on digitizing those.
Great, okay, so look at what legislative changes happened the year prior and update our policies accordingly. Does it do an update any old, amount of data policies that need to be updated? Uh, do taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
How many policies do we have total?
Oh my gosh, a lot of policies.
We had three hundred and thirty.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, thank you. Great.
That's fine, yeah.
What?
Actually, we have two.
Oh, we'll have much more. Amazing, all right. CNA, you guys, new wings this year, how are we doing?
Good, can we go again? Okay, so CNA, um, we are, now it's called CIA because we are super secret spies, not really, because we're curriculum, instruction and assessment. We are regrouping after a change from having a curriculum, an instruction and assessment director. We are really focusing on making sure that we have subcommittees in place that are required for all of our title funding. We are also looking at a curriculum.
Kind of shorting up curriculum, aligning curriculum, I think aligning one of our board goals, right, was to look at hiring some newer teachers, try and keep expenditures down, but with that comes, I mean, a strong need for curriculum.
And PD.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
And a curriculum review cycle.
Yeah, okay, so, hold on, regrouping after having a curriculum director, taking a look at all of our. I don't want to. Now, what do you think?
Um, no, all of our, like, our, like, our curriculum subcommittees.
Subcommittees, okay, thank you, I'll take a look at the, the trade-off between newer teachers versus needs for curriculum PD and curriculum PhD. Is that right?
Yep.
Great, amazing.
Mentoring for the.
Yes.
It, it did come up a little bit, yes.
Yes.
For me, as a new teacher, if I relax experience, I think mentoring is probably more important. To create them, professional development, community development, I want somebody to help me learn ropes, learn systems, probably use a computer program, how do I connect this, all of those things. And, I mean, that's incredibly helpful, you know. We definitely will, which we have in place, so just emphasizing that's.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, cool. CIP, guys, change it up, round four.
Goals?
Um, I'm not prepared to hear this, but, I, I mean, I'm here in the CIP group, I think essentially it is following Jim's plan, it's just all that, and seeing how well we can execute when he has the next couple of lists. His full responsibility, how would he do the best action, and do it at the time, and his management, tenure, actualized to you. And that, I mean, venue.
I would say it is about stewardship of our property, and an attempt to prioritize that stewardship in a way that is predictable.
Yeah.
And also allows us to communicate to the community, you know, higher duties.
Yeah.
That stewardship.
Yeah. Yeah, they're great. Okay, yeah. Safety and security, is that, security redesign?
Security redesign, fresh work, maintaining the emergency operating plans.
Yeah.
How well they're being executed, are we meeting all of our requirements in that regard, working on those soft areas, see something, say something, communicate with police and fire, so that everybody's in the loop, and those things that can kind of, my sense in the last two or three years of being on that committee is we've got a lot of improvement.
Yeah.
And open communication across the board there. Emergency operating plans, much more dialed in in terms of how schools are prepared and understand what the full.
Great. Ian, see, we're going to try to, to get our policy, right?
Yep.
And I think it's worth noting, we talked about this a little bit over the first, the last eight months, but we're shifting away from a lot of the building heavy work, so much of like the auditing and the prep has happened, and that's now in CIP land. I think more about policy in person, and the way that we're dealing with students and faculty, right? Does that feel fair?
Yeah, I'd just say really supporting what students are interested in.
As, yes, as due by our amazing students, that was incredible. All right, finance.
I think three things, oversight, so, looking at monthly financials, looking at your all-hit, being in a position where schools are having a lot of it right now. In education, not only myself and the board members, but working closely with the committee, and understanding the dynamics of the budget, for the long-term, the short-term, and communication, how we present the budget to the public, so that we understand where we're at, and taking action for happening, happening in those talks. For the better or for the worse, as possible, if we want to have a.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. There's a thing for a put-up, oversight, education, communication. Wellness?
I think, I think one other thing, I would rather that's forecast. I think we just have some public about who the best we can, where we can.
Yep, that's great. Wellness, you've met, oh, again.
This is a little deeper, but in terms of forecasting, we wanted to add, it just came up with our last couple of segments. This is a little deeper, but in terms of before casting, we wanted to add, it just came up with our last minutes of session, uh, that we're beginning to focus, is understanding of how the contingency fund works, and how it should, in terms of managing, that is a major, still a little bit of an obstacle for people to understand.
Yeah.
But I think like a little tendency last four months, that's gonna be, I bet you knew it.
Can't wait. I look, I look forward to them.
Great. Uh, wellness, Suzanne, you're, you're due, is there anything?
Um, sort of, Laura, I mean, we talked a lot about, um, kind of using the resources that are available to promote wellness. We thought we think that we would reduce insurance costs and all those things, but, you know, there's a lot of benefits that come and help trust and, um, publicizing and making sure, and we're aware of those preventative and, I think, um, kind of culture enhancing benefits.
Yep.
Great. Is that, right? Okay. I love it, that's great. And then, you wanna talk about PD?
Well, PD is a new committee, thank you for, for joining, you know, in a, yes, that's nice. Oh, so it's a required policy, actually, based on our new PD master plan. We're at least required to meet quarterly, um, so we recently met to, um, update and submit the PD master plan to the DOE. We're still, of course, we'll wait to hear back, um, but we will start to bring that back up. That was a longstanding, um, committee, it was here when I was here previously, and, um, I think just it was one of the byproducts of COVID where people weren't meeting as often. Um, so Suzanne has offered to represent the board on that committee. And so we will look at things like, um, continuing education hours for both teachers and all of our staff that have to have some type of credential, whether it's a healthcare professional, um, food service, we'll look at all of those, those pieces. We'll also look at what are our offerings, what do teachers need, what do, um, the different staff members need. So, it is a really great committee when you think about the extension of CIA, so I'm glad, um, to have Suzanne on both of those.
Happy to hear how we, uh, talking about and what they need in order to improve their practice. A minute's off the line.
Yeah.
Amazing. Cool. All right, um, we will do, one of my things to try to figure out how to do before Thanksgiving here is to just do a minute audit, uh, of things, which Jody has been awesome with people on reminding them where we're at. And there's, we, uh, we've figured out that people look and make sure going into budget season that like people wanna go back and look at what our amazing committees are doing, and that's all to date. Um, if you have these, check and make sure they're all posted. Um, I usually just add Jody to the invitation so that she's got his, as it were, voice of God over there. Um, and we'll go from there. Um, this is not on the agenda, that since Rob just brought it up, I was actually hoping, Rob, you've been doing a lot of inflections about this security redesign. You talked a little bit about attendance and employee questions.
Sure. Um, so we had four, plus five, here in Eastwood High School, fairly likely attended, and it doesn't show you. Um, we had one with a hot teen gender correct, incredibly likely attended, but very focused group. Um, and yesterday morning, I was at Rotary, which was a packed house, as Rotary always is. Uh, and then we just had this kid, and it was over six or eight, who was there. Um, feedback and support is definitely, and we're lovingly, this is a good act. Good questions have come forward, um, I think in terms of, you know, caution, not a lot, some, some misunderstanding about funding and making sure that people, this, this just came out of the stadium. Um, when the folks there, it's like, uh, my Facebook feed, people are talking about, and I'm driving my ass. So, not doing a good enough job saying, you're paying for this with cash on hand, or even with tax impact.
Yep.
Um, so we'll, we'll echo that from, from here next, um, but, you know, it's been a super well team, and we've got some more to go, and one.
Great, thank you. It's a lot of time and it's awesome.
And I don't know, Chris asked me to do a.
Yes.
A voiceover of the presentation, which is kinda creepy and weird, but, uh, so I did that, and apparently he may be doing that all week during.
That'd be great. That might actually be good to do at all the schools also, because if people are gonna be thinking about it, like you could also be at Harold Martin, couldn't you not?
I, I really don't care, but it's not there in your.
Multi-credit?
Multi-credit.
Yes, there you go. True, this is a crowd data. Think it's great, here.
A couple seconds.
Yeah.
Do the accent adjustment.
Yeah, I know, I'm excited. Right, I think we'll be all preschools, you know? That's a good way to capture a lot of, a lot of parents moving here. Okay, awesome.
We should get more information about the security redesign app on the website, because anyone knows we have very much.
I think it was, it announced like down at the bottom. Yeah. Cool, thank you. All right, policy. Are you ready?
Yes, I am, let me go back to the agenda. Okay, so to make, uh, as you can see, we have been working on our I policies. So we have a lot of I policies, and then one E policy, um, so we'll start with the E policy. It's our meal charging policy, uh, which is EFAA. These are all first reads tonight, so you will see these again two more times, uh, so if you have plenty of time to read them, soak them in, uh, and then get back to Suzanne and I, or Amy with any, um, comments, updates, questions, things. Um, so I'll just go through them this evening, and then, uh, it's gruesome after your lecture. So, policy EFAA is meal charging, that is our one E policy. As far as our I policies, we have policy IK, earning of high school credit, achievement of competencies. This is a policy we currently have, but need to update. Uh, IKF, high school graduation requirements, also a policy we have, and need to update. IKFK, career exploration readiness, pathways and credentials, um, this one is a new policy. Uh, IHVI, alternative learning plans, uh, one of these we already have, are updating. IHTH, extended learning opportunities, uh, this one technically we did have, but has funded on massive changes, uh, with some new RSAs, um, and some internet resources. Policy IMVD, high school credit for seventh and eighth grade coursework, uh, also changed with that, I believe.
Yes.
Uh, and then you have IMGA, service animals, this is a required policy. Uh, IMGB, therapy animals, which, uh, tax on to our service animals policy. And then IMG, animals in schools, which also tax on to our service animals policy. Uh, so those are your policies for the evening.
Wow, guys, amazing.
Let us know if you have any questions, they are, some of them are short, but most of them are, are ready, they're.
Wow, great, yeah. This is amazing. Oh, just, okay, slide. Great, thanks guys. All right, Laura, or that's it for our current, current, uh, current agenda, we hand it over to you.
New hires tonight. We have two. One of our current substitutes, Michelle Parmer Brantley, is transitioning into a role of a Harold Martin IA. So we are filling one of those vacancies. She's filling the role of Cheyenne Wells when she was an IA for us last year, before she became a teacher this year. And then in addition, um, we know that Deb Bowwell retired, Scott Mezzi came over here from, um, Harold Martin, and now Orlando Booker is joining us at Harold Martin as our night custodian. No resignations tonight. Current employees with additional contracts. Right now, we have one in the mornings, remember, on bus ninety-nine, we have a bus monitor, and we have a current bus monitor, but she rides only part-time. And so Edna Frost is in IA over at Harold Martin, and will be covering the other two days that, um, Mary is not there. In addition, sometimes she does a substitution for the afternoon bus monitor, so she has done this work before. And then lastly, with Title One, Title One this year is now in both schools, both Harold Martin and Maple Street. We are going to be offering tutoring services, so we have put it out there, and we have six teachers who would like to provide tutoring services.
Great.
Would you like me to, I'm sorry, read their names out? Um, Michelle Clarnor and Jill Smart for Maple Street. And then Carol Ann Neff, who actually is here at Maple Street, is going to be working for Harold Martin. Joan Follinsby, Kirsten Hall, and Karen Victoria.
Do those tutoring sessions happen outside of school?
Yes, um, we've decided this year, instead of doing an in, during the day program, to be able to maximize the number of instructional minutes and provide more support to students to do it after school. Um, so you'll see, you know, parents will be notified if their student has been selected, and we try to navigate things like transportation. One of the reasons that you see Carol Ann's name there is that we're trying to capture kids that maybe are living on this side of the, um, you know, this side of the town, or are participating in some of our after-school programs, so we're trying to, you know, reduce those barriers.
Thank you.
Just a quick explanation about Title One.
So Title One, it targets enhanced or additional math and reading, um, intervention. Um, and so we take the dollars that we get through that grant, and that is.
Federal money.
Federal dollars, and we pay the rate that is established through the HEACDA, which is forty dollars an hour. Um, and those individuals are selected, we have to have a very specific selection criteria. Our Title One plans will be on the, um, on the website, that was part of the work that I've been doing with them, to look at the selection process, what materials you're going to use. It's, it's a lot of compliance-based, um, pieces to have Title One plans. Um, you also have to have parent engagement, um, so very soon I'm sending out a survey to ask parents what kind of activities, what kind of engagement, what kind of information. It's almost like PD sessions for parents. Um, and then after that, we will put together a list of, of events, both virtual and in-person, um, looking probably at a math and reading night, which is pretty typical for elementary schools, um, but also trying to bring in some either local or state, national experts on things like executive functioning, um, how can you support, um, behavior development at home? How do you partner between home and school? Um, those are pretty typical for Title One family engagement. Uh, we're also going to purchase a parent newsletter that goes along with Title One, and that'll be on our website, not just for Title One parents, you know, anyone will be able to access that.
Okay. Thank you. Awesome.
Any other questions on personnel? Great. For donations tonight, I, if I may be subjective for just a moment, I was really happy to write this. Um, I'm really excited about, about this. So, first we'll start, we have an anonymous donor who is providing a five hundred dollar donation to grade seven and a five hundred dollar donation to grade nine. Those donations are held at the SAU office, and we work with those grades and that team of teachers in order to use tho, that money, um, for their students. In addition, we have a five hundred dollar donation from Garpone Motors for the Ozram Robotics team. You'll start to see Ozram Robotics donations come in throughout the year, it's that season, and so anything over five hundred dollars, remember, goes on this sheet. And then lastly, Maple Street School, it has been pursuing a grant in order to get an adaptive tricycle for their students, the students that cannot participate in PE in a normal, in a standard way. And they have been able to secure those grants, the, the adaptive tricycle is fifty-one, uh, hundred dollars. And so we are getting a one thousand dollar donation from Northeast Delta Dental, who by the way, is our dental insurance provider through Health Trust. And then Heisa has agreed to contribute the rest at four thousand one hundred and three dollars. And they, um, were very kind and said this is their way to contribute for students who may not be able to participate in their programs. So, it is really, really wonderful. Um, Dr. Sinoni is very excited, it can help two students that we have currently and students coming up from Harold Martin in the next few years. It's really, really wonderful.
Do tune up for free.
You should, you should send a thank you to other people that are working for us.
Absolutely.
In that, the gate is committed.
Yep.
Thinking outside of, I mean, they do an amazing job of supporting this town, you mean?
Yep.
So if anyone wants to volunteer for Heisa, listening, they should, because Heisa's always looking for volunteers.
That's true.
That is a great way of saying thank you.
True, and we also.
We'll also say volunteering is the best way.
That's true.
Yeah.
I can't wait to see the tricycle.
Mm-hmm. Me too.
Tom Raphael, this is CEO of Northeast Delta Dental, spoken at an event that I was at last night, and he's incredible, he's very proactive, I think they sponsor every single running race in the state.
Yep.
As well as a lot of accessibility, it's a, it's a pretty inspiring effort.
Thank you.
All right.
And my quick update is a couple of thank yous. Um, we had a, a pretty robust stakeholder team meeting, um, whi, which is part of a requirement under ESA, and so we brought together a large number of people, teachers, pairs, administrators, Lucy Kane, students, board members, thank you all, um, and we talked about how we were going to be using those funds. Uh, we will meet again in the spring, um, this is sort of like your fall, what are some ideas that we have to use that money? And then the spring will be, how did we use that money and how did it go? Um, the other is the PD master plan task force, again, we're required to have a, a large group of stakeholders attend that. Um, and I, I think it went pretty well, we were able to review a draft. Um, that draft follows the RSAs that are required for a PD master plan. Um, my next step was, after that meeting, was to do some revisions that were provided by the team, um, and to submit that plan to the DOE for consideration. I know that there will be feedback, um, from the DOE, um, but they have received that plan, and, um, eventually it'll come to you for approval, that is part of that process as well. I also want to take a moment, uh, to thank everyone, when we had that road closure last week, we got a direct call from the Huppington Police Department, uh, letting us know that the, the road was closed, and that gave us the time to navigate, uh, bus transportation at the end of the day. Uh, but parents and families, after-school providers, local partners, there were people just really willing to help and enable students to get home safely. Um, we're already talking about the budget, um, we continue to need instructional assistance, so, you know, putting in a plug, you know, when you wanna volunteer for Heisa, you may also want to come and be an instructional assistant in our schools. Um, it also, um, I would also invite people to consider being a substitute, because that also, um, that's how we got our, our newest DIA, they come in and they say, I'd like to substitute, and then we get them in, and they think, this is awesome, so I'd like to work here full-time. Um, so, a couple of upcoming dates that are important, uh, tomorrow at the middle school, there are parent-teacher conferences, um, and then Monday, there are parent-teacher conferences for all schools. If you do not have a conference scheduled with, for your student, please reach out to the individual schools to set those up. Um, and then Tuesday, we will not have school in observance of Veterans Day. Um, and then, looking forward to later this month, our Thanksgiving break is November twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth.
Great. And parent and caregivers are gonna need to use the Raptor system on the seventh, tomorrow, at the Middle High School, the physical will be in session, so anyone coming in for a parent-teacher conference will need to bring their ID.
That's a good point, and, um, you may wanna come a few minutes.
Yeah.
Before your conference starts, because we're anticipating, we have two, I think, machines at the middle high school, um, but we're anticipating, you know, that there will be lots of people coming at once. Um, so if your, if your conference is at one, maybe come at twelve forty-five so that you can scan and get in.
And if anybody at home is listening and actually coming tomorrow, the driver's license goes behind the scanner, not on top of it or in front of it, that will help.
It's almost like you've been problem solving that.
Maybe a little.
Yeah, yeah. That's great. Amazing. Okay, cool. Anything else?
That's all.
And I've got, do, and we need to have motion to approve it, do I have a motion to approve this agenda as a method?
I'm moved.
Any discussions? Alan is a favor. Hi. You're close. Great.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Uh, let's go through our committee updates, I think, policy, do you have anything else? We got a lot of first reads, you guys are busy. Great. Uh, anything else in CIA, I don't think you've met again?
No, we don't meet again until, like, this month.
This month. ENSC, have you guys met in the last two weeks? Okay. Safety and security met right before our last meeting, so there's nothing there, right? Okay. ENSC?
We're doing walkthroughs with contractors on money at Middle High School for the.
Here's.
Awesome. ENSC, you wanna talk about the last meeting?
Uh, yes, so our last meeting, uh, we really worked on, or do you wanna talk about it?
That's okay.
Uh, so our last meeting, we worked a lot on, uh, actually talking about styrofoam and single-use plastic in our, uh, cafeteria, and so as a group, we're gonna be, uh, writing a letter in support of reducing, so just let you know.
I actually received that.
Okay, great.
That's great, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, we need to talk about it, I, I'm gonna be meeting with Laura and Tracy Barkley. Yes, yes, we need to talk about it, I'm gonna be meeting with Laura and Tracy Parker, the food service director, um, to talk about our response.
Wonderful, yeah, that's something. Uh, budget and finance?
We meet on Monday.
Monday.
Seventeenth, seventeenth, not the tenth.
Yeah, the budget's next week. Make, right. Yeah. Uh, wellness is not as a philosophy, is that correct? Okay, and professional development, we just took the update.
Yes.
Cool, all right, that brings us to the second, uh, public comment portion of the evening, if you wanna come up, please state your name, address, and, uh, three minutes, please.
Top of my list, I had explanation of Title One, Two, Three, we keep hearing about it, but, uh, I hear we're gonna have an explanation on the district website, and I was glad that John asked about the Title One, 'cause it's been coming up more often, so thank you for that. Um, I had a question, which I guess I'm not expecting an answer to, but, um, I was curious if the audit is complete? They said it would be done approximately around sooner than later. Um, I also, um, believe in the past, the last day of October is when the average daily attendance number is given, for the total students in the district, and, uh, usually comes out, I think, in the beginning of November meeting, and that wasn't given, so I'm curious what that is. And just also, um, clarification, um, you've got your complete list of full-time employees, obviously there's part-time employees, and I don't believe that includes any of the subcontracted help that work in the schools, and I was curious, how, how do you look up what that encompasses of, if you have twenty-five part-time employees, or sixty, or, no, no idea of telling just by what's being presented, and the same with, uh, subcontracted employees, um, in the district, because they're another expense, and play into that ratio of people per student, so those are my comments, thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, all right. Guys, we do not have a need for a, um, public this evening, so I think, almost, is there any other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, this morning I was out, I'm wearing my driver's, excuse me, I'm gonna drink coffee, I'm gonna tell that, but, um, I was bringing into a bunch of my drivers, as I often do, the dungeons, because I, there's a lot of. One of the drivers, we drive up here from Swansea, every day, kind of know our route, so I know, I appreciate that, I appreciate very much, we're, we're willing to take that on.
That's great.
And we'll, we'll always give a shout-out to Greg, our kids, right, every time.
Yeah. Yeah, we're to Greg, but we, we love our drivers.
She's, she's covering for Greg right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Those are kids, that is great, awesome. Uh, any other comments from the board? All right, with that, we do not have any for a non-public, our next meeting is in two weeks on the eighteenth, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, Al is a favor, hi, are you opposed? Ready to go, guys?
Thank you.
I didn't mean to talk about, um, at the end, last year, Flo and Noah said we should set up a meeting with Ms. Doyle at some point to talk about like what she wants us to do, like what she envisions, like, student reps to do, and if there's anything, just to like have communication.